All right. Good afternoon, everyone. We'll call this meeting of the ASD School Board Work Session to order. Present in the boardroom, I see members Higgins, I see member Donley, and I see members Holloman, Lessons, Wilson, myself, your Chair, and we're Jacobs. We will notify if President Bellamy joins us online. Our first item of business today is E1, Request for Information. Does any board member wish to add a RFI item to the list? Member Donley.
I know it's in our board policy somewhere, but maybe I would, if somebody could just guide me. I'm getting a lot of communications from parents concerned about, well, they represent, right, that there's some political activities in classrooms, and I know we have a policy against that. In particular, an example would be posting posters that have particular political philosophy or bent. And I was wondering what are our existing policies and regs and guidelines, something like that?
Thank you through the chair. I'd be happy to provide you with a copy of our policies related to political activity in classrooms. We could put that in B C this Friday.
Thank you, Member Donley. Any other items for our RFI list before we move on? Member Lessons.
No, but can we bring the lights up a little bit?
Personal approval is well taken. Any other RFI items before we move on? Hearing saying none, thank you. We'll move on to C1, Discussion of Consolidations. Dr. Bryant, the floor yours.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the purpose of today's work session is to provide an overview to the board for the reasons why the administration is actively seeking community input on the topic of rightsizing our school district. And when I use the term rightsizing, I'm specifically talking about the process of consolidating school buildings and/or repurposing school buildings. So I want to share a couple of comments before I hand it off to our main presenter, Mr. Anderson. First off, my goal with the rightsizing initiative is to improve the process from what it was like back in 2022. And one of the first things that we're doing is starting this conversation earlier. Last time around, we had this conversation in October. We're officially starting this public conversation in April of the prior school year. And we also want to improve the outreach plan. We want to incorporate feedback from the community into this process as it progresses. And we also want an outreach plan that is more inclusive and captures voices from neighborhoods across the district. So today's presentation has a few goals. One, we want to brief the board on the current building utilization in ASD. We want to provide you with trends and forecasts and birth rates and population growth. Three, we want to talk about the ways that rightsizing can provide an opportunity for ASD to improve levels of service despite stagnant state funding and resources. And then lastly, a proposed timeline for the board on our next steps and what community outreach will look like. So we have quite a bit to cover. I'll go ahead and hand it off to Mr. Anderson, who is virtual.
Good evening. Tonight I'm being joined with Tony Riley, who's also virtual, and Sven Gustafson. And we'll talk a little bit about how we're going to approach rightsizing this time. I think you're going to find during the next six months, the administration will provide multiple briefings with information for all of our community who live in the Anchorage Bowl. These briefings, along with videos, will be posted on our website. We'll also have a series of surveys, short polls, in order to gather community input. And as we get to the timeline, we'll also talk about other ways that we're going to do community outreach late summer, early fall. So the purpose of tonight's brief is to start the conversation and to provide a timeline through December, not to provide all the information. Again, as I stated, there will be multiple briefings that dig deeper and deeper and deeper to provide information on what does level of service mean? What does it look like from a child's perspective at a small school versus a larger school? And I think you're going to see that develop pretty incrementally throughout the summer. It's not switching pages. Let me turn off my video in case it's an internet issue. Okay, I'm going to stop sharing, go straight to the PowerPoint. It won't be full screen, but at least we can get through the brief. One moment. Smaller. Okay, sorry about that. Apparently, testing it out three times was not quite enough tonight, but we're good. So a summary of where we are today. We know that we talked about rightsizing about a year and a half ago. We ended up closing Abbott Loop Elementary School, repurposing it for Alaska Native for a period of five years. But really, a lot of where we are today hasn't really changed in the last year and a half. The city's birth rate enrollment, all those numbers continues to decline a little bit. It certainly declined a lot during COVID. It brought back up again. And though birth rate is leveling out, it's still declining. And we're going to see that as those first-year babies this year, five years from now, have smaller kindergarten classes than this year's kindergarten class. We're certainly seeing more specialized services than in the past. And you'll see a couple bullet points later that talk about the increased intensive needs since fiscal year 10, but really emotional needs and others have certainly increased since COVID and haven't started to drop down. As last time, we brought this up as part of the budget discussion, and I think that's where it really went south for a lot of the community members. Although there are things tied to budgets and you see it across the country, this really is about meeting our mission, and our mission's to educate children. And during these next many months, as we talk about this with the community, it really is a discussion about what they value and how we take the limited resources that we have to increase a level of service in order to increase student outcomes. This is a quick snapshot of declining enrollment and changing needs over time. A couple of the board members were around in fiscal year 10 and recall that we had nearly 50,000 students in Anchorage School District, and we were booming, but honestly, since then, it really has only declined. And if you take that straight line from fiscal year 20 straight over to fiscal year 23, it really kind of erases the COVID dip, but shows that the decline really has been pretty consistent. And although we have 5,800-plus less students within that number, we also have nearly 1,000 more correspondence students than we had 14 years ago. And you can see at the bottom the number of intensive need students that have increased, but it's certainly a lot of more needs besides that that we've been seeing since fiscal year 21. So if you look at our K-12 enrollment history and forecast, you'll see that this goes out to fiscal year 32. The projections are based off PFD data that we've collected, demographers at state level, and our own demographer that we've been using for several years. And you'll see that it does show a continuing decline, although not quite as fast as we saw a few years ago. There are a number of things that could change this, of course. If something big like Belibdenum Ridge or Pebble Mine or some massive increase of work up on the north slope, there are things that could impact it. But we definitely don't see anything looming on the horizon to change this downtrend. But this slide is, on the top, you'll see the actual Anchorage Bowl birth counts since 2014. And then we projected them out for 2025, 2026, and 2027 based off demographers. And you can see that we have certainly started to level out. But the downward trend in the Anchorage Bowl, unlike Matsui Valley, which has grown at about 2% to 3%, somewhat consistently for the past decade, Anchorage continues to get smaller. But it isn't just Anchorage. If you look at the bottom chart, the bottom chart is the number of births divided by total population. So you'll see the number of births per 100,000 people. So it's a completely different number than the top chart, which is actual birth counts. But it does show, if you look at the very top line, is all of Alaska. We really have mirrored the upper northwest. In fact, all of the lower 48 as well, with some communities that have been outliers. And if, like the rest of us, you're watching the news frequently, you'll see it's really the same trend they've seen in Japan and China, South Korea, Europe. It's really been a global decrease. And when you look at the data behind it, it's somewhat interesting that you see in the U.S., for instance, the number of 40-year-old adults who've never been married is about 25% of the population of that age group, and it's the highest in history, at least in the last 40 years. And so it has been global. It has been Alaska as a whole, and it certainly has impacted Anchorage. So we find ourselves with a really brief summary that we do have declining school age populations. So we anticipate continued decrease in enrollment. We really do have roughly the same number of schools. We've closed three schools since fiscal year 10. It's cut out capacity for about 1,000 students, but our enrollment is is so much higher than that, or so much lower than that. And then we get down to where we're really going to focus throughout this summer, which is how low utilization schools are challenged with providing the same level of resources. And that's where we get to level of service. So as we go to this next slide, there will be other briefings that are entirely dedicated to education levels of service in order to make sure that the community can understand this better and to be able to see that as part of a long-term plan, increasing the level of service might mean that schools close or consolidate for a short period of time. It also might mean that a school that closes two years from now might be rebuilt several years from now into a brand-new facility, providing the best that we can provide, and students would end up going back to that location. And as we get later in the summer, early fall, we'll see the complexities involved with rightsizing the district. So as we get to the next slide, I'll turn to Sven Gustafson to be able to talk a little bit about a broad overview of levels of service.
So when we're talking about levels of service, when we have smaller schools, we actually have a lot of itinerant teachers that go from school to school, and sometimes up to three or four schools in their caseloads. We're talking about like art and health teachers, P.E. teachers, some librarians, music teachers that move around the district. We want to give every kid the same kind of service in our school district. Every one of our kids needs to deserve the same services. And one of the things that larger schools do is allow us to have full-time employees, so the FTE stays at one particular school so that we can have a full-time psychologist maybe in a larger school that has more sped kids. We can have full-time counselors at schools instead of splitting them between schools, ELL teachers, sped teachers. The other thing that larger schools do is allow for much less combo classes. And as we know, combo classes can, when we're working with our kids that have deficiencies, can be a real problem because we're looking at two completely different curriculums. So we're really looking at in elementary schools, as the schools get bigger, the use and efficiencies of our our resources become a much higher percentage. On secondary schools, the smaller schools, they get limited by course offerings. And sports and activities, everybody gets to do the same thing, but their sports and activities lower. And then it's really hard to schedule and master schedule all the different needs that kids have when you have a smaller school. So really looking at what those programs can offer as we get into the bigger schools with the larger populations. The other thing that we need to talk about is there's a lot more specialized services that we need to offer kids now. We have more kids needing specialized services than in the past. So really looking at what can we offer those kids when we're in those bigger schools is pretty important. And then if, even like when you're talking itinerant teachers, you really are paying for travel time even, right? You're not paying some of these teachers at certain times to actually be in front of kids. You're having to allow them time to travel. So larger schools, more efficient use of our monies, and actually better services for all of our kids.
And then one thing we do see with this as well is when you have 450 vacancies, which has not been unusual for us this year, you also have all those vacancies being tried to fill, tried to fill with temps and subs, complicating that level of service even more. So if you look at the next slide, you'll see our projected utilization starting next year. And again, going out to fiscal year 2031, as we talked about on Slide 4. You see that the high schools really are projecting to stay about the same with some nominal growth. And what we've seen over the last year or two, it's not huge. We certainly will be looking at this depending on how the Alaska Supreme Court rules on the Superior Court's ruling this week to see if that changes anything. But we have seen some students moving from outside Anchorage into Anchorage at the high school level. We haven't done any polls, but certainly we have more to offer at comprehensive high schools than many of the other areas around the state. So we don't see that number at this time decreasing anymore. So there's multiple things you can do, and we've talked about them repeatedly. We can change boundaries, and that increases enrollment at low enrollment schools. You can grow or place new programs in schools like special ed programs or pre-K and new programs that currently don't exist. Closing and consolidating schools is an option, and it's an option being looked at and being performed across the lower 48 as well. There's the final, the final one, though, I just wanted to camp out for a second, is consider leasing space in some schools for services that we currently don't offer. And we sent a survey out this week to our staff. And the last time I looked at the results on last Friday, we already had over 1,000 people responding talking about the types of different childcare needs they have, the amounts that they spend per month, the challenges they have getting childcare. And it's no surprise that that survey clearly is going to lead to discussions throughout the summer and early fall about some schools, maybe schools that we're okay with keeping that school in a neighborhood that might be booming in the future, but putting commercial childcare, leasing those facilities for reduced-rate childcare as an incentive to attract talent into our organization and to prevent people from having to leave because they can't afford childcare and work. So you will see those discussions happening quite often throughout the summer and definitely during the fall. And I'm certainly looking forward to community feedback as well as the board. The team has been looking at this option for probably close to 10 months now. So I think we're ready to move toward looking at that as an option for all of our faculty. So next we go to facilities in the Anchorage Bowl. I did want to provide a quick overview of how we see our facilities. And you'll see on this slide that we do have 90 facilities. Six of them are for support, and the rest are for schools. When you look at the types of schools that we have over to the right, I did roll in the charter schools and alternative schools because as you look at rightsizing, you don't just look at closing a school or emerging schools or consolidating schools of the same grades. You look at possibly taking schools and changing the grade levels that are in those schools. So I wanted to, for the board's purpose and for the community's purpose, to realize that we already have a significant number of schools that are not just K-5 or 6, 8, or 9, 12. But we have, you know, 16 that are either K-8, 6, 12, or K-12. So we will be looking at every possible option in order to right-size the use of our facilities and to take care of our kids better. For as far as the age of our school district, I think the board, who is definitely out and about during the campaign from January to April to get our bond to pass this year, our average age is 37, but we do have 33 of those school buildings that are over 50 years old. You know, a lot at the legislature this year was, why have you not closed any schools? Well, we have. We've closed three schools in the last seven years. We closed Mount Eliaumna, Mount Spur, and Abbott Loop, although Abbott Loop was repurposed for a period not to exceed five years. So we've started this path. And I think it's a path that we have to keep going down, at least during discussions with the community, and to try to figure out how to better utilize the facilities we have. So now we'll talk about next steps. I'll start May through July, and then I'll start tag-teaming with Tony Riley as we talk about community engagement. I think as Dr. Bryant brought out, that was probably the one weakest part of the last time we went through these discussions. And this time, Tony has already been working with ELL. We're translating the slideshows into five different languages. And she'll talk about a lot of the community engagement stuff that she's taking lead on. And I think the board's going to feel a lot more comfortable that not only do we try to reach them through surveys or polls or town halls after we've named a school, but we're trying to reach them while we're still having the conversations about what is important to them and do they have questions? And we need to provide the answers back to them. So we have started the website. It will launch this week. The first survey will launch this week. And we'll start having a number of polls. These will be one-question things that go out over a blackboard every time people log in or potentially on the website to try to get this continuous dialogue throughout the summer and fall as we're closing in on making recommendations. And June and July, we will provide an analysis of the feedback we have so far at the last June board meeting. And of course, we'll stay in touch between then and the first board meeting in the end of the summer. And we'll be talking about metrics and rubrics that could or should be used to evaluate schools as we move into August. And at this point, I will hand over to Tony if she would like to talk about the community engagement because it's going to be a huge push for us.
Sure, absolutely. Thanks, Jim. So as everyone has said, our goal in this process is really to do it differently. And so we have provided here a high-level overview of a timeline, but what we are really looking at incorporating is a lot of community discussions and dialogue to get feedback at every point in the process. So we really want to make sure that the community understands the impact of our So we really want to make sure that the community understands the impact of our declining enrollment, particularly on our levels of service as they were discussed this afternoon. But also that we understand from the community perspective, what's important for us to consider when we talk about closing or consolidating our schools. So as Jim said, we're starting now with this process in May, really trying to inform the community about enrollment and our school utilization and really levels of efficiency and what that looks like in different capacities. And over the summer, we're going to take some of that information from the polls and early surveys that we're starting to do right now and work them into what is going to become this sort of metrics or rubric that will help us to evaluate schools. And that's not the end of our community engagement. As you'll see on this slide, we then roll into town halls and some community dialogues. And the goal of this is really to move into that kind of second phase where we're sharing those metrics, but we're also kind of asking the question and saying, this is what we think we heard from you back in the springtime. So what we're hearing now, and if not, what are we missing that we need to do to kind of modify these metrics and rubrics before we move forward? And so that's the point of kind of that early August to September timeframe where you'll see those town halls and community dialogues to continue receiving that community feedback and output. And our goal with kind of doing these different modalities is we know that we give a lot of surveys. And so we've really listened to the community and are trying to reach them in different ways aside from just our traditional multi-question survey, maybe having some polls or using our different systems such as Blackboard or texting or different things that we've thought about now that might be you more useful and a way to reach some of our audiences that we don't normally reach or hear from throughout the process. So really by the time we go into next school year and we continue having these community conversations, our goal is to really develop and provide a multi-year strategy for the board by the end of November that they can look at moving into December that will really allow us to refine our plan and work overall towards just increasing our operational efficiency.
So just to close, I, I spent last week with the Council of Great City Schools Chief Operating Officers and I talked to many of them who have gone through the same process, have had a lot of lessons learned. And everything Tony talked about was one of the bigger lessons learned they had. The other thing that, that I heard consistently across the board was very similar to what we experienced a year and a half ago, which was by and large, when you inform the community about the excess capacity you have, the expenses it takes to maintain older infrastructure. More than half of the populations do agree in, in almost every case that some schools need to be closed and consolidated or repurposed. But they all felt the same thing we felt, which was once schools are named, it really did come down to any school but this school. So hopefully as we go through this process and it's a little bit more deliberate and it's a little more drawn out. Before we finalize the metrics and rubrics we use to identify the schools, this multi-year plan will provide something that's not just this dark cloud of rightsizing meaning close and consolidate, but also can show that maybe we did close a school in a title one neighborhood. But as you look multiple years out, as other schools are moved around in this rightsizing strategy, you also rebuilt a brand new state of the art facility in an area. So people can see that there's, there's something good to come and not just negatives. So we've got about six months that we'll be working this within the community and with the, within the school board. And I'm looking forward to starting this. And I, I'm looking forward to engaging as often as we can and as many possible modalities as we can. So that's the last slide. I don't know at this time, if there's any comments, I'd first like to defer to Sven or Tony if I left something out and of course always to Dr. Bryant before questions.
We're ready for questions.
Just for the record, President Bill may join us at about four fifteen. Board members in the room or online, do we have questions? Member lessons.
Thank you. I don't know which slide it was. I'll just describe it. One of them talked about the challenges that exist within elementary schools and as well as secondary schools. Do we expect the rightsizing plan to involve both or just elementary schools?
We will be looking at all levels on this slide where I showed that there's K twelve, there's K eight, there's six, twelve. There's multiple different combinations as you look at closing and or consolidating. And so we'll be looking at every level. I think it's, it's fair to say the vast majority of the middle schools next year will be at capacity. But it doesn't mean that we won't be looking everywhere for opportunities to meet students' needs in the best way possible.
All of member lessons.
Thank you. And then the other question that I had for clarification was from the last slide regarding December and a multi-year plan. And I'm wondering if by December, the administration is expecting to propose all schools that may be consolidated within a three to five year, I mean, you know, first, a multi-year cycle. Will all schools be named at that point in time?
That is the intent. And that's so everyone in the community can start seeing what's coming. If you have a multi-year strategy, then you can start looking at all the boundary changes. So we don't want to move, we don't want to just do boundary changes and then come up with school closures only to have a family have to go through more than one boundary change in a two or three year period. It makes more sense to synchronize boundary changes with the, the rightsizing plan. So parents would know two years from now, you would be going to X school if you live in this area. And it really does give a little bit more stability to the discussion. And the larger districts that have looked at multi-year plans appear to be, you know, pretty successful. I mean, if, if you think about the number of people that we've had in the, the former Abbott Loop Elementary School at school board meetings this year, really, we, we put a lot of effort into making sure that transition occurred. And, and the school board hasn't been filled with emails and, and comments all year long. And I think it's because we really did do it right and we feel comfortable with how to do it. But we think if you're a community member and you say that a strategic plan is twelve months. Well, a strategic plan is not twelve months. A strategic plan is several years. And if we can get that sort of strategic plan for facilities in Anchorage, then you can incorporate those years where you plan to build a new school where formerly it was a school that would have cost so much money that it really was cheaper and wiser to demo that building in order to build something more state of the art. So yes, we do expect a multi-year plan and we do need a decision in December because as you know, in January, when we build a budget, that budget is based off which schools are in the district the following year. So similar to the, the last time we closed Abbott Loop, that decision for a multi-year plan would be December. That would allow us to go ahead and build the budget in January, February for the board to approve and follow our normal path. But, you know, three years is not quite strategic in terms of a long, long-term strategy for facilities. But it certainly is a step in the right direction to show that we're not thinking of things six months out or nine months out and reacting every year as opposed to a deliberate plan.
Member lessons follow.
Thank you. One last thing, a question. What, at what point in time will our various partners in local and state government sort of be informed? I mean, do they get any, it seems like it would be great to have assembly members and legislators aware of the process in a meaningful way. I don't know what that means, but it seems like it's good to partner with them. So I guess what would be your plan for, for that partnership?
I'll get with Dr. Brian when we get back and we'll prepare a timeline for that side. I think it's fair to brief them at their convenience as early as possible that we have a long-term plan. And, and I think the bulk of the legislature already knows that discussion. It's been happening in June oh since January and they've been looking at Anchorage and specifically talking about Anchorage and the capacity that we have for our current enrollment. So I don't think there's going to be any surprises that this is a continuing effort.
Thank you, member lessons. Other questions in the board or member Higgins?
Thank you. I, I guess I'll start with just a light comment and saying, I, I always had a problem with people referring to right sizing because if you do anything other than what I'm proposing, it's got to be the wrong size. But, and people use that term when they're going to lay people off. They don't lay people off, they use right sizing. So just a little concern there. What I saw right now is a presentation on the positives. Can you explain to me some of the negative potential impacts with this that we have to at least acknowledge?
Of course. I, I think every board member went to at least one of the school closure town halls that we did a year and a half ago. We know that our schools are, in, in many cases, the heart and soul of that small community. And we know that there are everything from fear to anger to frustration that change is going to happen. We, we also know that because we did a lot of efforts with Abbott Loop specifically and we intentionally teamed up students in classes and grade levels. And if they could go to the same teacher or a teacher they would have gone to at the new school, that they would already have friends and all, and the research, and we talked about this openly, that the research showed that the quicker someone finds friends, the quicker that transition is. And I, I think it's, I think it's a, a positive point for us that although it was emotional to those families in the Abbott Loop community, I, I think we have conducted the move of Abbott Loop to the two other schools pretty well. I think the community settled down and, you know, but, but you're not going to take away the emotion of someone who bought a house so they could go to a specific school if that school is the one that, that closes. Those are negative, Pat, and, and they, they always will be.
And through the chair to member Higgins, that's a great point to fully consider the potential drawbacks. And I'll emphasize some of the points that Mr. Anderson made and some of the many points that we heard during our town halls when we went through this in twenty twenty two. So first of all, you know, our schools represent the, the fabric of our communities. They're filled with rich traditions and routines. Many community members cited that when we built schools back in the seventies and eighties, they were intentionally designed to be walkable. And as we have fewer and fewer buildings, we'd be moving in a direction that's counter to what the vision was, you know, several decades ago. So that would be a shift for the community. We heard a number of valuable points of feedback on ensuring that we adequately serve our title one students in our communities where students need the most support. We need to make sure that we minimize any disruption to those students and families. So that's a big consideration that we need to take on. And while it, it, we certainly may be considering a title one school as one for consideration for consolidations. The difference is that this year, we need to ensure that the community is aware that we're doing this, not due to some sort of budget shortfall. There certainly will be budgetary limitations, but the rationale for this is that we're projecting fewer children in Anchorage and we're projecting conditions that mean that we're not going to be able to provide the level of service that our families expect unless revenue goes up or our footprint shrinks. So it is a throwing con and I think that there are some compelling pros. But to member Higgins' points, there are some serious cons that we need to fairly deliberate.
Member Higgins follow.
The other question then has to do with capacity. Right now, we've got large classroom sizes. Assume that we are going to actually staff according to the Pikes Oldham study, the, what's adequately funded. For whatever reason, let's say the legislature is forced to adequately fund it. And we're going to need, then we, we're going to hire hundreds of teachers. Okay, we got a hundred and something empty right now and we're going to have a hard time filling. But assume that we're filling them, the number of classes we're going to need and the capacity is going to go way up. Has that even been looked at to, to determine what the capacity for schools would be required? If we were adequately funded, rather than base it on the lack of adequate funding and inability to fill teacher jobs? I want to look at it both ways. What do we need long term? And, and part of that is adequate funding. How would that change the staffing and the amount of classes that we would need in the Anchorage School District within that? At one time that was a big issue and they said, well, if we got the money, we wouldn't have the classes. So that was always a big issue there anyway, because the population was larger then, I know that. And I know that things will change with staffing, with number of kids. It could well be that thinking you're going to go to private schools may come to an end and some other issues might drive things around a little bit too. You never know how it's going to go. But I'm looking at it saying, what, what is our capacity need if we had full funding for what we need for the school district? Because it's one to fifteen, K to three, twenty five above that will, will doubling the sizes almost in some places. I don't know whether or not that factor, I would like to know what that plan is.
And I'll interject before Mr. Anderson turns in through the chair, member Higgins. Great question. And just to recap what was shared, you know, they, we, we do have a hope that we're able to adequately fund schools such that our class sizes would be dramatically smaller than what they are right now. Right now, it wouldn't be uncommon to see a classroom with twenty seven students in it. But what if there were an A S D where classrooms were twelve students larger? That means we would need to dramatically expand the number of teachers in funding. I think that's fair. What I would say is that that would be a, a prime point of discussion when it comes to repurposing. A school consolidation plan is not entirely closing buildings, demolishing buildings and relinquishing land. Given the fact that there may be a universe where there's more children in Anchorage or maybe there's a universe where funding is adequate so that we can implement the findings of the Pikes and Odden study. That may be a compelling reason for us to not forego all of our buildings and to think of creative ways to repurpose. So if there were a day where we needed more classrooms, we could unlock that opportunity. So that's how I see it from my vantage point. Mr. Anderson, would you like to add to that?
Whoops. Sure. Member Higgins, we, we haven't actually looked at every classroom and every school and put it at the right class size. We know that when our budget deficit was, and Andy could correct me, somewhere between five point eight and seven million dollars, that at that time, Pikes Oden was going to cost us a hundred and fifty million dollars. And that was to pay the prevailing wage that we already paid. We know now we're certainly in a, in a much different place where deficits close to a hundred million are, are to be expected, plus the hundred and fifty million, and that would be prevailing wage, not the salaries it would cost to actually hire that many teachers in Perez and increase the, the cost for the staff. So we have not done an analysis to determine what would be the amount of money that would draw that many teachers up to Anchorage. And frankly, I'm, I'm not sure how to do that deep analysis to the point that I would give you a, a, a dollar amount that I was actually confident in. So we, when you're looking at really a hundred and fifty million plus a hundred million deficit, and that's if, if we pay what we're paying now, it's a significant amount of money that just hasn't been discussed in June oh at all. Although you're right, we don't know what will happen in the future, either through legal means or, or if Alaska becomes a cash cow and finds a lot of money. But we haven't done that work, frankly.
Member Higgins, last follow.
Just one last follow up. I just want to comment because I have talked to the principal, the head of the A P C and their capital group and, and a couple of them within the last few hours. And, and the concern over Abbott Loop is still out there. I want to make sure, I know that the got to meet code within five years. They've got the funding, they think they could handle that. I know there's other things they'd like to do to the school. What I'm hearing from them is that that's not a high priority. Just that before that final decision is finalized, the board will be engaged. I certainly appreciate that we may have I certainly appreciate uh that we may have a lot more options out here very soon and that may change things. But I don't want to make it final that, that, for the parents and the, and the staffing and everything else there, that this thing is an absolute. Because there are some pros and cons that we are hearing, I'm hearing from the community in regards to that. And um, uh, and that final decision has to be one that the board gets involved with. So I just want to clarify that because there seems to be a perspective here within that group that this final decision has already been made and that it will not change. And I just want to leave that open.
Thank you. Through the chair, Member Higgins, I think that's another great point that you raised. And I want to emphasize that the reason why we're using the term five years is because that's the, the number that we shared with the board that the fire marshal would allow us to use that facility in the absence of an upgraded fire suppression system. We did provide a quote to the board a, a few weeks ago in one of our um weekly communications that the, because of the cost of inflation, we're, we're talking, you know, over $4 million potentially. But with that said, if there were interest from the board in re-looking and revisiting the, the consideration around the Abbott Loop facility, we welcomed that, but we wanted to, to lead that direction where the board left us off, which was a five-year extension um in the absence of some sort of bond or funding to, to restore that building to where it needs to be. Uh, it wasn't an administrative decision. It really was. We're just keeping our community in the loop for, for where the board left us when it came to the Abbott Loop facility. We welcome change if, if that's the will of the board.
Hey, I'm going to jump in with a couple of questions before we go online. Um, I don't, the slide deck isn't uploaded to Board Doc, so I can't pull it up. But um if we could go back to the percentage of capacity for um um the middle and high school specifically, Mr. Anderson, could you tell me if that's that includes the sixth to middle change for next year, if that's current numbers? I guess it would be future numbers. So what does that?
Okay, I've got it up on the screen. That is with sixth grade to middle school. And that is the 2025 projection. Um, naturally, we've, we've all seen over the past couple of weeks that there are some legal matters that, that may change our enrollment in August. We don't know what the impact will be. We don't know, um, you know, the governor's made it clear. He's going to go to the, the state Supreme Court. We don't know the timeline for that decision or the impact for those students in statewide correspondence schools that currently live in the Anchorage Bowl. And, and obviously, you know, weeks before school starts, as we do every year, we'll be closely looking at um, do we see trends for new enrollments or not? Uh, do we see any trends, you know, in a negative way? And we do that every year, really starting in July. And this year, certainly it's on our mind.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Just a quick follow-up um on that data. How did you, how did you get to the utilization? Did you um combine the total programmatic capacity by the enrollment or did you just conduct an average of the buildings? I was just looking at the, I was trying to figure out how much Eagle River data skewed those percentages, Mirror Lake and Chugak are by a wide margin are least utilized middle and high school, uh, which are both below 60%. So I was trying to get a handle on how much, how much those two schools skewed that data.
Yes, I'll tell you that Mirror Lake definitely skewed um the population or the, the utilization as well as uh Chugak High School. I, on purpose, I initially had put the utilization rates of all of the schools, but I didn't want anyone this early in the game to start looking at specific schools, thinking they had been targeted when we may have other uses for those facilities to include um potential leasing for childcare or other pre-K, any other possible uses before we showed individual schools by utilization. I can provide that though in Board Connect if it is requested.
Yeah, I would request that. Um, is there another board member who would ask about data? I see Member Lessons here. Thank you. Um, and then last follow-up before we go to Member, President Bellamy and then to Member Donnelly. Um, I, and this is more of a request. Uh, as we start framing this conversation um and preparing um how we engage the community in this, I hope we're going to highlight i- in addition to ASD enrollment, Mr. Anderson, I appreciate you doing this too. Um, the decline in population in Anchorage, but then also in Alaska, um noting that we've seen, you know, a, a net outmigration trend um for roughly a decade. And, you know, we're losing a third of our 16 to 26-year-olds. Um, if those additional context points aren't provided, I think the, those receiving the information might assume that there's a challenge with school districts and not at the state level um with just the stability of, of our estate economy, frankly. And so um I think that that also needs to be acknowledged as part of the presentation. So that's my ask personally, but I appreciate the presentation.
Oh, that's a great comment, Member Jacobs. Um. Everything you saw in this chart will be deep dives later. Um, within Anchorage, I think many of us know that we have an aging population as younger students are leaving and not coming back. There's so many other factors and I didn't want to throw everything into one brief and call it good. Um, but to spread it out so we can um really start informing the community about all the different uh factors that are impacting whether we make decisions or not, or what decisions we should be making.
Understood. Appreciate that. Um, thank you, sir. Um, we'll go to President Bellamy online.
Thank you. You just uh answered uh, 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 at least addressed one of my questions regarding uh how the data that we have in the presentation correlates with the um Anchorage you know, the city of Anchorage demographics. It appears to be very, very close to me, but I think that's also very, very important. My question is, uh, um, and you may have covered it because I was a little late getting on uh, 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 online. Um, the ser- when will the survey go out? And what the kinds of questions, if we know the kinds of questions that we will be asking the community?
The first survey will be going out this week. Um, we will have some poll questions, which are one poll questions that will be interspersed on Blackboard when people sign in um to get subjective feedback that doesn't have all the demographics assigned to it. Uh, but there will be multiple surveys going out. The first one really is um, do they understand uh changing enrollment? And how do they feel? What are the, what are the important things about their schools and what do they value? Do I value walking to schools? Do I value schools that can provide more resources? Um, so the first one is pretty um broad and, and more about how does the community feel about this? We know that the bulk of the community um did know a year and a half ago when we talked about closing upwards of six schools. In fact, since then, as recent as just a few months ago, someone asked me um when I was talking to them and they found out where I worked, but I thought you closed six schools already. So we know that, that some people remember parts of it, but not all of it. Um, so it really is restarting that conversation, making sure we get a feel for how people um, do they understand changing population and enrollment? And how do they feel about the schools and what's important? And as you get further on in those surveys, then you start talking about the metrics and the rubrics that you might use to evaluate one school over another based off priorities of those metrics, but we're really not there for the first one.
Okay. Follow-up, Mr. Chair. Quickly. Rel- relative to, uh, you know, one of the things that got bogged down and just took full center stage a year and a half ago was this whole thing about saving money. Uh, eh, uh, people missed, they equated any kind of restructuring with mu- saving money. Uh, I, so I was glad to hear uh the uh the, get the information regarding how doing so will enhance the services that we provide to our students. And I think um I don't know how to get people to us, how, how to get the public to separate the cost from the opportunity and the uh, um you know, the enhancements that, that uh if we, if we were uh if we were to better um accomplish, utilize our capacity and consolidate our schools, that that would equal something more than money, which is more opportunities for our kids. So I thank you and uh that's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Member President, Member Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, you mentioned a couple of times about leasing schools for the purposes of, of childcare. What's the significance of the leasing terminology?
Great question, Mr. Donnelly. Um, so we're, we're working with D to modify um some criteria on how they account for capacity of schools and uh working on getting a change. So if we do a long-term lease, that that amount of square foot would not be counted against us when we're competing for capital grants at state level. Uh, so that way you don't have to get rid of the square footage, but it would no longer count against you if you did a multi-year lease. And we'll be working that also all summer and, and through the fall.
Follow-up. Um, I'll ask a follow-up on that. Uh, just out of curiosity, Mr. Anderson, is that a policy change or regulatory change, a statute change that's required?
Well, we have, uh, Mr. Larry Morris works for Capital Plans and he's on the committee at the state level. And obviously, Mr. Finessef works with them a lot. And we're working to see what can we do? And at what level would it need to be something where we seek legislative assistance or can we work it prior to that? Um, and it, it really is going to take a little bit of time. But if you look at, even if it takes us a year to be able to get that changed, um, if we can give our employees hope um based off rough numbers on the survey and we'll do a full analysis. We have, we have employees paying 1,100-plus dollars a month for each of their children. And some of them are stating that the vast majority of their paycheck goes to childcare so they can get health insurance. So if we can produce, if we could um work an RFP with the groups or with the organizations, provide reduced rate childcare, um where, you know, you're, you're looking at closer to half that amount per month, it would be um, i- it would be better in many cases um as an incentive than a $500 hiring bonus or a $1,000 hiring bonus. It's something that they could look, look at as um something that helps them year-round. And we think that as an incentive tool for both recruitment and retention, something like that outweighs the amount of time it takes us to get the square footage eliminated from what we report to D. Although we're pretty confident that we're going to be successful.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I just wanted to flag for um the record that I um was asked to be a part of the committee which is forming the administer, uh, the Assembly Ordinance drafting the um uh municipal policies surrounding the Prop 14 implementation. So if there's anything I can do to support from then, then please let me know. Um, other questions from the board on this topic before we move on? Uh, we'll go to Member Holloman, then Member Lessons.
Um, I did just want to ask, as we're going forward, are we looking at um identifying a significant number of schools and working with all of them at the same time like we did before? Or would we tend to work just on one school, make a decision and then move on to the next?
To, to be honest, Member Holloman, we haven't picked a number of schools at this point. We really are trying to get feedback from the community to find out what's palatable, what's acceptable, what, what they're willing to embrace. Um, and I, I think it's just a little premature to pick a number. We know that there's going to be a multi-year plan. Um, so whatever the total number would be, would be spread out over three or more years. But we, we've really honestly have not picked a number at this point or, or a name of any school.
Uh, Member Lessons.
I realize we're running out of time, but I appreciate the chance to ask one last question. Um, how does demand for a certain school factor into all of this? We have a number of schools with, with pretty robust waitlists. Um, and I just wonder if that is a part of the consolidation? I mean, maybe that's like I'm jumping ahead of things, you know, that's an element that could be in a rubric, or maybe it shouldn't be. So I guess I, I wonder what, how, how does the administration account for uh demand um that families are showing?
Sure. And I'm sure, uh, Mr. Anderson has some thoughts, but one thing that comes to mind would be when it comes to repurposing a building, um similarly to how we relocated ANCCS into the Abbott Loop facility, we could look to move a high-demand choice program into a larger building that could facilitate growth depending on a waitlist. That's one application. Uh, Mr. Anderson, are there other applications to that question?
Certainly. I mean, for the most part, if it's a very high-demand school, it probably does not have a low utilization, but there might be a better facility somewhere else um that doesn't need all of the capital going into it or even routine maintenance. We don't know. We haven't, again, we have not selected a number or an individual school. But as you see some of these other surveys coming out, there will be very specific questions about um what schools should not be considered. And we will, um, you know, we'll, we'll put down examples of, you know, our immersion schools, something that just can't move. Um, because honestly, if you look at some of our immersion programs, they really don't have a large number of students in them. Um, one in particular, the principal called all the families or most of the families on the non-immersion side and none of them chose to switch to the immersion program at that school. And it, and it could be that um there's such a thing as an immersion school academy in the future. We don't have that as a plan currently. Um, but I don't think that we would take anything off the table at this point until we've gone through the community discussions, the engagement, the surveys, get some background data. And then honestly, do the analysis on how much maintenance costs, how much utilities. Um, what are the, the capital costs for the next 10 years of a specific facility? And it might be that we can provide a better facility even for a program that has a waitlist. But at this time, we don't have a single individual school that we have selected that met that criteria. I'm, I'm just putting it out hypothetically.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Um, hearing there are no closing comments from the administration, I wanted to thank um Dr. Bryant and Mr. Anderson and team for the presentation today. Um, we have utilized our full hour for our work session. Fortunately, we were not able to address C2 um regarding the CCL Q and A. And the board may wish to consider adding an extra hour to a future work session so we get some of those questions answered, but that's a, a call for President Bellamy to make. With that said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of legal updates, negotiations and contracts. So moved.
Second.
Made by Member Holloman, second by Member Lessons and the objection. Hearing, seeing none, we are adjourned to executive session. Thank you.